Hello, Jesse.
Hello, all. First day of the Dodgers Division Series, so I had to present.
You know I'm missing my Laker game, so.
Okay, Chair, we are live, audio is up.
Okay, thank you, Anthony. Everybody ready to go? Okay. Okay, welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting for the Morro Bay Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, October 6th. It's around 6 o'clock and we're doing this via Zoom. We have a full complement here, so all members are present, so I'll call the meeting to order. Do we have any, anybody wish to have an announcement, Planning Commissioner announcements? Anybody wish to bring anything up? Okay. At this time, we'll open it up for public comment. This time period is usually reserved for items that are not on the agenda or the consent calendar. Anthony, do we have anybody in the queue?
You know, Chair, I do not see any hands raised in the queue currently.
Okay, great. So we'll close public comment and move on to the consent calendar. We have two items, A1 and A2. We have the current and advanced planning processing list. And then we have the approval of the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting of July 21st. Does any of the commissioners wish to pull any items or have any discussions? Okay, see none. Can I get a motion?
I move we accept the consent calendar and approve.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Nope. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Scott, could you call the question?
Sure. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas?
Hi.
Commissioner Gravio?
Hi.
And Chair Lord.
Yes. Okay, motion passes. So next item is item B1. This is case number CPO-365. This was located on 3093 Beach Comer in Morro Bay. And it's a request for a time extension on a coastal development permit. And the CPO. So can we have a staff report on this?
Hi, good evening, Planning Commission. Yes, I have a short staff report. I also have an image here I'll share with you. It's a very short PowerPoint, but let me, give me a moment here to share the screen with you.
Okay, while we're doing that, does anybody have any ex parte communications? Okay, see none.
Okay, sorry, hold on a second here. Here we go. So this is a request for a two-year time extension. The coastal development permit for 3093 Beach Comer was approved by the Planning Commission in September of 2016. The property is a vacant lot located near the intersection of Beach Comer and Hatteras, which you can see on the screen there, hopefully. My screen share is working. What Planning Commission approved at that time in 2016 was a new construction of a single-story, approximate 3,000-square-foot home with a 478-square-foot garage and adopted an MND, mitigated NAGDEC at the time. The applicant after the Planning Commission meeting did apply for building permits, but through some personal circumstances and financial and personal challenges, the applicant has not yet been able to inaugurate the planning permit. They did apply for extensions. Our municipal code allows for two one-year extensions to be granted by the Community Development Director. Those happened. And the planning permit expired on September 20th, 2020. The applicant did submit his time extension on August 30th. So that request to extend the permit is now before the Planning Commission. The applicant is requesting two years. It's staff's recommendation that the Planning Commission grant that two-year time extension. All of the conditions on the project and the environmental mitigations would still apply to the project. The applicant is going to be joining us by phone tonight, I believe. I talked to him earlier today. He is hopeful that the Planning Commission will consider his request. This is a project that the Planning Commission spent a thorough look at when it approved it in 2016, and so he asks for your approval. And this is the image, and then I have this other slide. This is the, just for reference purposes, this is a visual simulation that the Planning Commission saw when they approved the project. There have been no changes to the building construction. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thanks, Cindy. Do we have questions for staff on this?
I have some, Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Michael.
Cindy, can you tell me the building permit was approved at the time? So that's not in dispute, it's only the planning permit?
Right, so what inaugurates the planning permit is construction start, basically shovel in the ground. Although their building permit is considered ready to issue, he's not had, frankly, the funds to pick up the building permit and commence the construction. And so that's the reason for the time extension.
Have there been changes in the fee structure that would be associated with the planning administration phase of the project since it was approved?
I believe, I mean, every year, the master fee schedule does go up a little bit on July 1. So I would believe that there are building fees that would be increased. Scott might know a little bit more about the ins and outs of the building permit fees.
That's just a question at this point, so.
Yeah, okay.
That's all.
Yeah, Jesse?
Cindy, would you say, has anything changed substantially in the approval process, planning-wise? If we were to go through this process again, would there be any additional considerations given to this project by way of that reapproval?
No, it's really just before the Planning Commission to extend that permit. We're not reopening the coastal development permit. He's still locked into that permit approval. All of those conditions and the environmental conditions apply. It is rare that the Planning Commission, I will tell you, sees these types of time extensions. In my tenures with the city, I've only ever seen it on commercial projects. Generally speaking, residential projects are able to start within this timeframe.
Right, so I guess my question was hypothetically, purely, if this were denied and the applicant reapplied for the CDP again, or I'm sorry, what is, yeah, the CDP, would there be any additional requirements of that applicant by virtue of the reapplication for a CDP?
From a planning perspective, there'd be no changes. It would be the same review process again.
But I mean.
There's been no changes to the planning code since he applied.
Okay, that was the question.
Okay, Jesse?
I think I recall from the applicant's letter, or a letter, that there was an original permit that goes back as, the original permit application was sent like 2011, is that correct?
He originally first contacted the city to apply for his planning permit in 2011. This particular address is unique among our planning projects in the last 10 years. He did a number of environmental studies. He probably did more environmental study for this area of town than probably any other residential property. He really thoroughly studied it. He had the misfortune of applying for his permit at a time when there was some frequent planning staff turnover, and this actually predates my arrival in the planning department. So he'd gone through about four or five planners. And so there was, unfortunately, because of staffing constraints, it took him longer to get through the planning process. He had to do additional environmental studies to get through CEQA. And then unfortunately, that took a couple of years to get through the process. Then the Planning Commission looked at the project in 2015, asked for some corrections. He came back in 2016, so it really did take him longer than what our normal track record is to get approval.
And I have one other question, and I think you've already answered it. The explanation in the file for the reason for the extension are a little bit sketchy, but I also realize there are privacy issues involved. So my question was, in terms of precedent, were there extensions in the past that were granted with such sketchy, you know, reasons presented? And I think you said that you couldn't recall even a residential extension being granted.
I've never, I can't recall in my 10 years with the city ever hearing about a residential extension that went to Planning Commission. And certainly in the research that I've done on other projects that predate me, I've never came across that. On commercial projects, we are a little bit more forthright with Planning Commission, where the Planning Commission in the past has asked for actual, like, commercial financial feasibility, like, we want to know that you're actually going to pull off this commercial project. I mean, that kind of detail. On residential, what he has said, and I think this is in his letter, that he's had both personal issues and financial issues that have delayed his ability to start construction. And they, and it is, it's compelling, you know, personal issues.
Okay. Okay, Jesse?
One more question, Cindy, if I may. The sea rise, the sea level rise, the hardening of, is this still meet that today? I'm sorry, I didn't ask that question properly. Would this project comply with today's requirements for sea level rise and then hardening or non-hardening of?
So it would comply with today's, you know, planning requirements. And I say that because we're still under our current general plan and our current LCP and zoning code. When they, when Earth Systems did the wave run-up study for this project back when it was being approved, they were, it was quite a distance away, the maximum wave run-up on this. So that was, it was far below any level of significance. In our draft general plan, there would be study requirements that go along with that. But in this case, the applicant meant that with their original approvals or with their original application.
They meant by virtue of the planning.
Of the study.
They were in at the time, but if they were to reapply under the new proposed general plan, they probably would have to do an additional study for sea level rise, right?
I don't think so. I think they'd be, I think they'd be fine. I mean, they were, the analysis showed that they were, the property was still quite some distance. I'm kind of struggling here, so I'm going to maybe ask Scott to, I'm going to phone a friend here, but.
That's fine. I think, I mean, fair question, and, you know, our take on it at this point is that the sea level rise analysis that was done originally would hold true underneath our new code. So I don't think there'd be any issue there. And remember, I mean, this isn't a coastal appeal zone. The project was reviewed by Coastal as well at the time, found to be acceptable. So I think on all fronts there, I think we're covered.
Yeah, thank you. You said that much better than I.
Well, I couldn't spit the question out right either.
Okay, any other questions? And I've got a couple.
I just have one more.
Okay, Michael.
My recollection is we've had a lot of discussion on other projects about the kind of creep into the paper street. Do we have any clarity in terms of the new ordinances going through that made that very clear, that the people on Beach Comer do not have access to the space in that paper street relative to improvements? I just want to make sure that if there was a gap in the statements on the ability of people to have some kind of improvement in there, that it's very clear that's not part of the deal here. We do want the latest statements about the Beach Comer West property line status to be acknowledged. And maybe that's something that could be in a, something at the end, but that's just a question. Are you aware, has that part changed at all? Do we have any?
Well, I think I know what project you're talking about, and I was not at the Planning Commission meeting where that feedback was given to staff, but I will say that I'm familiar with what you're talking about, and it doesn't apply to this particular property. And the reason is because west of the property, immediately west and really northwest of the property, is the sand dune habitat that they were required to buffer their development back 50 feet. So if you look at the site plan, it's really almost a crescent-shaped house. So, and part of their conditions were that the area that was identified as ESHA throughout the planning process and through the MND, it was required to be put into permanent conservation and reported against the property. And that actually was done. So that, those environmental mitigations that were handed down in 2016 have already been satisfied. So they, in perpetuity, cannot develop that area.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, anybody else have any other questions? Okay. Then where are they in the code cycle for the building permit? Has the building permit been issued, or would this extend the building permit application? Or where are we with that?
So they applied, and their permit, they applied in April of 2017. Their permit was deemed ready to issue, and they would be, I believe, under the 2016 building code. So if the Planning Commission extended the coastal permit, it carries along the building permit with it. So they would still be under the 16 code.
Okay, so there are some major changes in Title 24 between 16 and 19. I don't think there was a lot with structural other than, you know, do you know if we had a, if they had gotten a seismic study for liquefaction in that area, especially with the new flood zone inundation maps? The liquefaction zones, I think, have increased quite a bit with the sea rise of.
There are no changes in the map, in the map, in the FEMA maps in that area.
Okay.
So if they were required to do it, then they did it, because the permit's ready to issue. But there have been no changes there between the previous code cycle and this code cycle.
Okay. And if they applied into the new codes, especially on the zoning, where would the ADU allowances fit in? Would it fit in? Because on their casitas, they were restricted to a deed-restricted game room or guest room. How would the new ADA allowances work out on this project? And would they need, would that trigger a new building permit?
Likely would trigger a new building permit, because there'd probably be separation requirements. I would imagine that that casitas area in the front of the house would be a candidate for an ADU conversion. Because the building permit and the plan check process predated some of these ADU law changes. When we plan-checked it, we required that they record a deed restriction against that, on that casitas room, and they did that. So there is a recorded deed restriction that it can't be used for an ADU. They'd have to go through the process and likely would require an administrative coastal permit for the development of an ADU, and then a corresponding building permit. So that would be a whole separate process.
Okay.
Can I understand that real quick?
Sure.
So we specifically prohibited them from constructing an ADU in conjunction with this process, but since the laws have changed, since they've applied, it seems like they would be allowed by right to convert that casitas into an ADU if they so choose.
Right. We didn't specifically prohibit the ADU. It was on their building plans, they proposed the single-family home, and then they showed a casitas or, you know, this kind of separate room area. And the code requirements at that time require a deed restriction if there is, you know, for that type of floor plan. After, after it went through building process, that's when ADU law changed. And so now if they wanted to come forward and they say, hey, you know what, we don't want to do the casitas anymore, we want to do an ADU, they can do that. And yes, they're allowed by right per state law, but because we're in the coastal zone, that development of an ADU would require an administrative coastal permit, which is how we process the other ADUs in town.
And this is the deed restriction that goes along with a guest house, is that correct?
Yes.
And so that would trigger, that would trigger upgrading to the new building codes, correct?
Right. And depending on when it, at what point in time the ADU happens, you know, do they want to do an ADU while it's still under construction, or do they want to do it, you know, a year from now, two years from now?
Well, not necessarily. I mean, they could, in theory, you know, vest this permit, vest the building permit, apply for a remodel permit to remodel that casitas into an ADU, flip the door from the entry to before the front door, and call that an ADU all day. I mean, they should be able to do that, and the ADU would then be under the 2019 code, but the house is still in the 2016 code. That would, that seems like it would be acceptable. Not that it matters for this.
That could play out like that, that's correct.
Yeah. And then where are they with the fire sprinkler requirements? Was it required for the existing house? I don't remember seeing that.
I can't say what the fire sprinkler requirements are.
2016 code, they should be in there.
Yeah. What I got from building is that the permit's ready to issue and they're ready to start construction. I'm sorry, I didn't inquire about fired status.
Okay. Any further questions from the commission? Okay, so at this time, we'll open it up for public comment. Anthony, do we have anybody wishing to speak?
I think the phone number one might be the applicant.
I do not see any raised hands. I do see a phone number, Brian, okay. Brian W. just raised his hand, so I'm going to go ahead and bring him up. Please stand by. Okay, Brian, you're unmuted. You're free to speak.
Hey, thank you. My name is Brian Whitcomb. I'm a neighbor there in that area, and I've got a couple of questions. I know the owner there has been trying for a long time to build on that lot. And a couple of questions I have is, when I looked through all the material today, the last couple of days, you know, one thought is, or one question is, the biological study, which I guess is part of the CPO, Coastal Commission permit there, is actually quite old now. And not that I'm saying there's any changes there, but being that it's right adjacent areas, it could have both the Morro Bay snail, the shoulder-band snail, and the butterfly that, is there any requirement to look at that again before construction? I don't know if you want to go through all my questions I want, or just wait for an update, or wait for an answer to each one of those.
Brian, why don't you go through all your questions, and we will address them after the public commentary.
Okay, great, thank you. The second question I have is, I understand the applicant has gone through some personal hardships, and, you know, him and his family are doing better, and especially COVID-19 has been horrible for all of us. But I guess the comment I have is, I'm going to ask the question a little bit differently than one of the commissioners asked, is it a case where people have asked for an extension, multiple extensions, and they were told no for residential, not commercial, but residential? So in other words, is this request, I heard, it's said that in 10 years, the planner couldn't recall a request like this, but has there been a time when we actually, someone was told no, they could not get an extension for residential? And the only other last comment I have is more of just of an opinion comment, you know, you look at the design of the home, and in a lot of ways, it doesn't really look a lot like the other homes in that area. I guess there is a larger home on the other side, to the south, but most of the homes are a lot smaller, and I don't know if that was thought about with respect to just how it's going to look in the area there. So that's all I have tonight is questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Brian. Do we have anything, Anthony? Do we have anybody else wishing to speak?
I do not see any more raised hands in the queue, Chair.
Brian, let's, that one phone number there, that is probably the applicant, and he might not know how to raise his hand. There may be a chance we can see if they want to talk.
Would you like me to allow the person to talk and see?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, will do. Okay, caller with number ending in 915, you are live and free for your testimony.
Did I ask where you were coming from?
Caller, you're still muted from what it shows, do you?
Did you ask the best questions, what they say?
APG, you also have Brian talking there.
Yeah, it looks like they're not able to.
Yeah, it looks like 915 is not responding, so.
And I will say that 915, that is the applicant's number. So I think the Zoom call format is new to them, so they may be having some technical difficulties.
I believe if you press star 6 or star 9, it will unmute you. Not seeing any changes with that.
Okay, well, we tried.
Okay. All right, then, let's, I think we had a.
Yeah, that's, I'm sorry, Chair, forgive me. They, that particular person, 915 phone number ending, just raised their hand.
Okay, let's go ahead and see if we can, if he can unmute, and we can, we can bring him on.
Trying to do that now. I do believe something may be happening with their phone. It's not allowing me to even send them a message to say to unmute, so it's.
It's a landline number, that makes a difference.
Oh, yeah, that definitely does make a difference.
Okay, Cindy, you've had discussions with them. Is there any way you can paraphrase what their concerns were and stuff?
Yes, yes, and actually, I anticipated this outcome, so I called him about an hour ago, and I tried to anticipate the questions and then asked him what his answers would be, so I can speak. He did say that, that he, you know, really just asks for the Planning Commission's compassion. He is hopeful that you can grant the two-year extension. He said if it was up to him, he would have started construction years ago, but he's just had a lot of bad luck, and is hopeful that he can, you know, get the extension by the Planning Commission. And I can also answer the questions from the other public commenter, if you desire me to.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that. And then also, another question to you, would this, you know, CDP, would this be transferable in case they sold the property?
It would go with the land, so if he wanted to sell the property, the new buyer would have that permit approval. They'd also be subject to the same conditions. They're also subject to that same conservation agreement that's been recorded against the property. That limits, you know, development outside of the ESHA area. And I had also wanted to add, the property was previously for sale. I did confirm that it is not currently on the market, so I'm. the market. So I just wanted to throw that out there, by the way, since you asked that. In response to the questions, the first question had to do with biological study requirements, including shoulder-banded snail and some of the other environmental requirements. While the project, once the project starts construction, they're required to have an environmental monitor. That environmental monitor is required to provide training to the contractor and construction crew, and also to do monitoring for all of the various requirements, shoulder-banded snail, sand dune habitat, archaeological monitoring. That's all there, and that doesn't go away. The second question was whether or not in the past, if there have been any residential projects where people have asked for an extension and they've been told. And while I did say that, I couldn't recall coming across another project in town where a residential applicant was told no. I will say that it's always been the policy of this city in past approvals, past analogous approvals, since I don't have a direct example, is really to work with people to, you know, people spend a lot of money, thousands of dollars. And in this case, he spent, you know, he did a geological study, he did a wave run-up study, he did a shoulder-banded snail study, he did a phase-one archaeological study, and about two or three other studies that I'm not mentioning, not including the archaeological, excuse me, the architecture and engineering. And it's, you know, to deny the request for the, the extension, it, you know, it's, I don't know quite enough how to say it. But usually, the city doesn't, you know, in its past approvals, has not been, I don't want to say the word punitive, but I'm sorry, I'm not, I can't think of another word right now. Certainly is the decision of the planning commission to make. I'm just giving you some context for kind of some historical situations. And also, you know, since the pandemic, we have been trying to work with applicants in town, whether it's businesses or residents, to, you know, is there a way that we can, you know, move forward to this app?
Yeah, I would say that this applicant, Mr. LePlante, has certainly gone through extraordinary circumstances on this project. The delays that city, you know, talked about before with the staff turnover was pretty bad. And then when we thought we got them all sorted out, we showed Coastal the plan, and they said, what about the ash that's out there? And the city had never applied ash policies to any of the development along that stretch of Beachcomber, for whatever reason. It's the first time that it's ever been brought up. And he was, and this is one of the last houses that's out there. And so he got stuck in that and had to redesign the house. And this is like after all the years he spent going through the various staff members that were here. So he had a pretty tough road to toe. And so I don't know that it's, you know, outside of the realm to request the extension that he's requesting, given what he's had to endure to get here. Certainly not normal, I would say that. This is not like any other project that you've ever seen. The amount of time it's taken is, again, somewhat extraordinary, in my opinion.
Okay. And then Scott, also, there was a question of the size of the property. You know, on the lot, lot coverage calculations, would that be, would the buffer zone count in the numerator or the denominator of the lot coverage percentage?
I, I believe when we calculated lot coverage, we didn't exclude the, the ESHA from what their maximum lot coverage was.
Okay.
Or from that formula.
And was, was this prior or after our residential design guidelines were initiated?
It was right, I think it was right after, or sorry, it, right, yeah, right after. Because it was in 20, it was approved in September of 2016. And I want to say, design guidelines were approved in 2015.
In 2015.
Yeah. It first went to PCT in 2015 and then was approved in September of 16.
And I think we required, if I remember this project correctly, we required them to continue the detailing on the windows and doors throughout the.
Yes. Yeah, you did.
West side of the house.
Yeah. And we did call that out during building plan check. Yeah. I just don't have a visual sim from the, the building plans themselves. So I, I just put the picture from the meeting that night.
Okay. So I'll close public comment at this time and hope that we've addressed their concerns, you know, the applicant's concerns. Bring it back to the commission. Would anybody wish to, to comment or further questions or discussion? Jesse?
All right. I'll go first. Yeah. So I, I think I knew what Cindy's trying to say. And I, I'll just say it for her. I think it would be unfair to not continue this, this project. I think that's the word you were looking for. I hope that's the word you were looking for and you didn't want to say it. But that's how I feel. I mean, I think they've gone through extraordinary circumstances. And, you know, due process being what it is, it sounds like they've gone through it and then some. So I, I don't see a reason why we should be being punitive or penalizing these folks. That's my comments.
Any further comments?
I agree.
Joseph?
Yeah. You know, the, the process that begins in 2013 and is still continuing now is a very long time. But, you know, he's certainly, simply the pandemic is an extraordinary situation. And I, I for one, wouldn't want to have him have to go back and do all those kinds of tests and analysis and, and all that sort of, sort of thing. You know, I, I was concerned that should another case arise, we have difficulty distinguishing this one. But I think, you know, if we substantiate that there are medical and financial hardships, there's this unique pandemic situation facing us now, and that part of the delay was a function of having inadequate staffing way back when. You know, I think there's plenty of bases to, to separate this from something that might arise in the future with somebody else asking for an extension. The only thing I'll say, though, is, you know, with respect to code changes, you know, I'm not so sure about that one, you know, because, you know, that's kind of like analogous with, you know, a house costing a little bit more to be constructed now than it was in 2016 or 2017 or 2018. So I'm still thinking about whether we should apply the current code. I don't know exactly what that means specifically in terms of building code. But maybe that's a question that I have that could be answered.
Okay, Michael, do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I think the, I remember this, this and bits and pieces from this whole time period. And, and, you know, we've gone through a couple paradigm shifts. You know, one is the environmental one, which is why nobody paid attention to the ESHA back in 2011. And we still don't pay attention to enough of them, but we're, we're strengthening that in the new, new ordinances that we're putting in. So I think, I think the, the things that were prepared in 2016 with the monitoring basically put the owner at risk. If the situation has changed, the monitors will be seeing the situations change and they'll have to mitigate it. The other change is the, you know, which was alluded to, is the sea level rise and the response of the city and the new ordinances to not participating in, in, you know, public hardening of facilities and things like that. So I think all owners are on notice in a place like Beachcomber that the city is not going to be seawalling the ocean away from, to protect your property. You're at risk. So whatever understandings or, or, or written statements were in the 2016, I would assume the city is relieved from any requirement that, that they live up to those 2016 understandings. And they would be going with what, what the latest were in terms of the obligations of the city toward the site. And then I guess the other one that, that concerns me is the economic one that's gone on. And it's certainly hurt the, the applicant. And I understand that. I've, I've got some projects I'm considering that, you know, the economic situation is very difficult. And, you know, the only thing I would say is for the city, it is as well. And that's why I asked the question about things like the, the fees for, you know, all the different reviews that have to go on during construction. I wouldn't want to see us on a schedule where there's a, there's a, you know, pieces of, and I don't know, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know. And maybe you do, Cindy or Scott, but I would hate to see us not having someone pay for what the costs are to, to come in and observe the construction and report back adequately on, on fulfilling the permit during construction. So that's why I asked about the old fee schedules and things like that. I don't know where we are. But I'd hate to see a million and a half to $2 million project have problems paying fees during construction, which are real-time costs, not ones that happen plans review years ago, which I understand. I'm certainly willing to do that. So that, that's the only one that, to me, that's open is, is would we want to have a, a statement in there about updating any fees? And perhaps there are none. And the understanding that the city has no hardening policy in place to protect anybody on Beachcomber.
Okay. Yeah, my concerns with it on, on this, and, you know, I'm leaning towards, you know, approving the extension. You know, the, the code differentials on the building permits on these two code cycles, and Jesse, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But, you know, some of the requirements were, in the geological studies and in the, in the soil studies, they, they increased or decreased the bearing capacities and increased the, the stability, the, the factors for stability and for, for liquefaction and stuff, especially with sea, the sea level rise coming in. And what they're finding is that's, you know, as the sea level rises, it, it's not only physical inundation, but it's also a water table rise and with the associated liquefaction that goes with that. And so that would be my biggest concern on, on that. And then, then like Michael brought up too, I'm, you know, I would be concerned about their ability or their presumption that they could harden the, harden the structure or harden the coastline or harden their property against, against inundation. And I think we've dealt with that with the ESHA before. So Scott or Cindy, can you clarify that? Or where would they, where would they be if they came in with a, with a riprap, you know, jetty or something application along that, you know, along their property line instead of along the ESHA?
I mean, it's, it's great that, you know, the new code includes language that specifically tells people that you can't do that. But the Coastal Commission will not permit it. So it's off the table.
Okay.
The only time you can, you can harden structures after the fact is if they predate 19, the Coastal, not Coastal Act, right, 1972 now. They don't allow you to do it otherwise. You had to have something in place prior to that for them to allow you to harden them now. Otherwise, you have to do adaptive retreat.
Okay. And we would have that whole, that whole section of the, you know, that whole street on that whole side would be in the same situation, you know, so.
Yeah.
So, 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 once again, you know, remind me on the, would they need to be, would they need to upgrade their soils report on this project at this point if they go to construction?
No, that wouldn't be a requirement. I mean, they had a soils report done, this new house and that location specifically. But no, they wouldn't be required to do an update to it at this point, no.
So they've, they've, they've got all their permits approved and just the fee's not paid?
The final fee is not paid, yes. That's correct.
Okay. Okay. And do you have any idea how long that, you know, that permit approval was, was granted for the completion?
Do you mean when, when it was deemed ready to issue?
Yeah.
It's been ready to issue since 2017. So they've paid about 50% of their building permit fees, or maybe a little bit more. The only thing they have left to pay is, is that those fees, those final fees you pay at permit issuance, and then the school impact fees.
Okay. 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 So any discussion, any more discussion on this?
Just, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jeff.
I'm sorry. I keep talking over everybody. I just wanted to kind of address what Joe and Jerry were talking about. So typically, on those, on the building code updates, if they go past a second code update is when the community development director can ask for those building updates to be done. So like on the 2022 update, so January 1, 2022, if they're not finished, typically you would see the community development, community development director not approve an additional extension past that date without requiring the code updates. But, I mean, at that point, they're already knee-deep in, in construction. So, I mean, a lot of, a lot of what changed in 2019 was energy. The, so the structural stuff that did change were coefficients out of ASC 716, which was the new adoption of the, of the structural manual. So ASC 710 had different coefficients, but it actually got less restrictive for wind. I don't recall there being a huge difference in, in liquefaction coefficients. But in any event, whenever they start digging, whoever did the soils report, it sounds like it was Earth Systems, will be out there monitoring the, the footing depth and looking for, you know, looking for stable soil. So I, I'm not concerned at all that, that the building code, the building codes need to be updated. I think they're fine. And I think if, if they take, you know, several years in construction, it'll take care of itself anyway. So.
Okay. All right. Discussions or motions?
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear that the building permit fees that are still pending aren't à la carte things for number of inspections. They're just, they were based on some other formula back in 2016, 17, something like that. We don't charge per inspection or, or things like that.
No, we don't unless, unless we go out there and repeat the same inspection several times and they fail. Then we'll charge, we'll charge them to have us come back out again.
Okay. Who wants to, who wants to bring forward a motion on this?
I could do it.
Okay, Susan.
I move to approve resolution number PC 15-20, a resolution of the Morbid Planning Commission approving a time extension for coastal development permit number CPO-365 for new construction of a new 3,041 square foot single-family home with a 478 square foot two-car garage on a vacant lot located in the R-1/ S Point 2A zoning district and within the Coastal Commission appeal jurisdiction at 3093 Beachcomber.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussions? Okay. I think we're good. Scott, could you call the, the question, please?
Sure. Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Barone?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas?
Hi.
Commissioner Nagrafia?
Hi.
And Chair Luer?
Yes.
Motion passed by zero. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you. And good luck, good luck with the, with the project.
I'll pass that along to the applicant.
Okay, great.
They're listening. I'm sorry. This process was so stressful for them.
Well, it's, you know, situations do change and, you know, especially when you're dealing with, you know, with a large, with a project like this, you know, financing changes and stuff. So I, I understand. Okay, new business? We have none. Quoted unfinished business? We have none. So Commissioner comments and future agenda items? Susan?
So I had a couple of things, mostly questions about future agenda items. So we're going to be looking at the general plan. And Jerry, I wondered if you had thought about what approach we're going to be taking to dealing with it? Do you, do you feel like we're going to mostly look at Coastal Commission staff comments and whether we're comfortable with the changes they made? Or do you anticipate going through the whole thing again? Do you, have you thought about that in all your spare time? Just to make it easier to prepare for the, the next meeting?
Yeah, I just got the notification today. So I'm not sure how much we have as far as, as changes from Coastal Commission. That's probably, Scott's been closer involved in that. And I think it's going to determine, be determined by how much, how much we have to go and retrofit what we've gone through before. I think it would be good to go over the things that we thought should have been in there and may not have been in there. And, and review. I, I'm not sure we need to go. And and review, I I'm not sure we need to go word by word again.
Thank you.
But in some situations or some some areas, I think we we might need to, depending on how much it's changed.
So we provided you an Excel spreadsheet that shows all of the comments, both public from the G-PAC, from the Planning Commission, from the Coastal Commission. And we show in that in that table, I mean, there's like 800 comments or something. But in that table, it shows, it gives you the page numbers where those changes were made. And I my suggestion, you know, would be that as the commission starts to look at the document, you use that as your tool because we we also give you the link to attract changes version, you know, that has changes from when Coastal Commission weighed in. That's unwieldy to look at. Certainly if there are, you know, policies that, you know, are are dear and dear to you, certainly go there and look at them. But even doing a compare and contrast on two screens is difficult when you're looking at the, you know, how we did the changes. And we renumbered things, we've changed the format based on Coastal's input. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of changes just in how the document looks from, you know, when you reviewed it to when after Coastal, you know, reviewed it and made the recommendations about how they'd like to see things. So it's kind of hard to look at that.
Can I add in something, Scott?
Sure.
And one other thing that we found when we went through this with Coastal is some of the edits that they made, there were multiple pages that they they struck out and they said, no, we really think you should move this into this section of the element. So you'll find that something might that might have been on, say, page 489 is now on page 430. I mean, so there's, there's, there's big changes. So it might be overwhelming to look at that track change because you might just see page after page of red ink, which is why, you know, Scott brought up the spreadsheets, the, we have them on the Plan Morro Bay website. So you could go and you could look at, you know, Coastal and you could say, hey, what happened to this water quality section? And you can look on the spreadsheet. And and we did put on there both the original page location from the public draft, and then where you could find, you know, oh, they they made a comment about parking on the Embarcadero. Oh, I can see how this is how staff addressed it. It's now on page 332. Hopefully that streamlined some of your review so it you can move, you know, expeditiously through that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other, Joseph?
Yeah, I I wondered if there was any update on what's being proposed for the the elementary school property. I've been hearing things and I I just wanted to hear anything about what was going on.
Yeah, we've had, you know, they've, they've, they've run a, you know, they tasked staff with hiring consultants to run several different options for ways they could redevelop the sites to continue a revenue stream for them after Diablo closes, you know, because they're going to be cash strapped after that happens in 2025. That's coming quickly. One of the things, they looked at all different kinds of scenarios. We put houses out there, we put townhomes out there, we put apartments out there, put some commercial out there. And one of the other things they looked at was manufactured homes. That's their preferred alternative. And they're, you know, starting in the, and I would say the school board said, okay, we see why you proposed that. And they proposed that because they're going to finance it themselves. And as opposed to going out and getting a loan. And they thought in the other scenarios where they were having things built, they were going to have to have public private partnerships. And and they weren't really going to be making the revenue stream that they were going to need. And so that's why they went down this road. They're looking at doing really nice units, different sizes, a big range of them. They've been talking about options for, you know, to provide 25% available to teachers, 25% available to City of Morro Bay folks. So they're looking at a lot of different things. They're in a stage now where they can start doing because the board said, hey, I go run, start looking at this now. And so they're at a stage now where they can start doing public outreach, which is the conversation when Scott Collins, city manager, and myself met with them a week or so ago. We said, you, that's great. We understand where we're going with it now. We like that. You need to start developing some concepts and you need to start talking to the public. And one of the issues we raised is, you know, with this manufactured home concept, you're not really getting the density, you know, in this location that we'd be looking for. So we have encouraged them to not only just have the manufactured home concept that they were talking about, as well as coming up with design guidelines for these that we would adopt and hold them to, but also coming up with some other type of housing option out there, maybe apartments or something like that, that they could get a revenue stream out of. And it would up the density some. And so we've asked them to look at that as well.
My my impression from the few times that I've dealt with these manufactured home, that probably reduces the input of the planning commission or the city council. Am I correct in that?
Which is what I'm not, what I'm not okay with. And said, you know, we're not going to allow you just to put whatever the heck you want in there. So we're going to require design guidelines, we're going to approve model types, and they're going to have to have each one of them approved through us before they put one out there. So that's what's going to be locked into the conditions. We told them that upfront. We didn't really want a free for all situation. Because if they say they're going to give us one product, then we want that to be the product. They committed to working with us collaboratively on this because they noted our concern. And we're in, you know, step point five at this point, you know, I mean, it's it's early on and they've just gotten the okay from the the school board to to even run down this road to look and see what is feasible. And so that's where they're at right now.
Are they, sorry, are they looking at preserving the school buildings?
Portions of them, yes. You know, the bell tower portion of it, yes. The remainder of it, they were, they were suggesting no. They're in pretty bad shape. And there's not a lot that's very remarkable about the remainder of those buildings. They're pretty simple. So they talked about keeping that main structure, maybe having that as a community gathering area for the for the development. And then, and then again, tearing down the rest of this stuff out there and and then building their their projects. That's what they talked.
And Scott, what is the zoning on that property now?
It is R4, R4 and C2. I was looking behind me at my zoning map. It's R4 and C2. The C2 piece is at the back, behind the parking lot, if you're familiar with it. There's an area that's undeveloped, and it sits adjacent to the shopping center where Autozone is. And it kind of is a great separation back there. They were going to provide a connection to the the shopping center, which I thought was great. And they're looking at doing that. So that would probably require a zone change because they want to put housing back there.
They want to retain ownership of the property and rent everything out, right? That's kind of the idea?
So right now, that's the concept they're looking at. So they would be, you know, they would have models that are available for you to buy, and then they would lease you the underlying ground for the space. And that's how they would generate income. They also talked about buying units themselves, putting them on permanent foundations, and renting those units out wholly to people. So having different kind of, you know, different kind of options. One is just total rental, one is you can come in, buy your unit, put it on a permanent foundation, and and then you would pay the underlying lease to the school district. And so that was the option that generated them the most income. And and it could be done through the, you know, so they didn't have to go out and finance it. So that's why they sort of chose that.
Just a facetious question, would they have to pay school fees?
That's a good question. They have to form a, they have to have to form a nonprofit to do this. It's an interesting, I don't, I can't say that I completely understand all the ins and outs of the legal ramifications. They have to separate themselves arm distance from the school district and form this other entity that manages it and then funnels the money back to the school district. I
I was going to ask that, yeah.
Yeah, they were trying to explain it in the meeting. And we're maybe doing the greatest job, or I wasn't doing the greatest job of understanding and asked a few questions and still didn't understand them when they left. So it's kind of like, okay, there'll be some other entity that's called School District LLC, and it'll build the units and manage the property and then give the money back to the school district.
It seems like an overreach of school district funds. I mean, it doesn't seem like that's what the school district is there to do. But but what do I do?
It's, it's interesting. I mean, it's unique. The the school district, it would be looking at laying out teachers and closing schools based on the amount of money they're going to lease from the Diablo closure. So it's, the ramifications are real. And we don't have anything that suggests that populations are going to increase anywhere near. We need to maintain the school there because we're going to open it later because we'll have greater populations. And if we did grow, it would probably be, we'd have the annex property and be going out there. And if we increased, you know, our population that way, we'd probably get a new school that way as opposed to this older school, which has a lot of issues. So, I mean, a lot of interesting things. They're all, you know, this is all preliminary stuff, though, I would say. Again, we're, they're, you know, probably prior to step one almost. And there's going to be a lot of conversation that goes on. And it may, when it's done, look nothing like the thing I just described to you.
Okay, Joseph?
I have one question.
Jesse?
Procedural. So the November 4 meeting is scrapped for the election and we're going to meet on Wednesday in Luwau?
The November, the election is November 3, which is a Tuesday. And we're not having the Planning Commission meeting on that day. And we're going to have a special meeting the next day. And so we'll be, one, when we leave this meeting this evening, you'll be sending it to that special meeting that's on Tuesday, Wednesday, the 4. And we'll be noticing it that way as well. And we'll be noticing the cancellation of the meeting on the 3 as well. So just to allow everybody to be able to vote, however they're going to do it. And not have to worry about attending our Planning Commission meeting, where we're going to talk about a major thing for the city, and that is the city general plan. Didn't want to have people conflicted, needing to go out and vote some way and then not being able to attend the meeting and want to have that conversation. So we just moved it a day. Certainly, I don't anticipate the Planning Commission is going to get through that in one day, in one meeting. And so, you know, we're anticipating and going to have some conversations with Amy tomorrow, you know, about what days are available, hoping right now that we can have consecutive meetings on it. But it's somewhat predicated on her availability. And so we're going to have some conversation about that tomorrow.
Okay, Michael, did you have a?
I just wondered if Scott, or probably Scott, could summarize the actions that the council took on the vacation ordinance? It seemed that, from what I saw, they largely endorsed almost all the recommendations, save the lottery and the, it went into a grandfathering kind of thing. That's, I imagine that's what will be in the text coming out Thursday for next Tuesday's meeting?
Yes, they asked us to, they picked up most of the stuff that that the Planning Commission, you know, recommended. You know, there were several, there were the line items of items. And can bring something up here. Just give me a second. Let's see. So they're, you know, they, the the request that the Planning Commission made, you know, one of them was to change one of the whereas is they had the quality in front of character. They were good with that. To have the signs, we added the language to the sign section that it'd be visible and legible. So you could read it. They were good with that. They did change, here's the one thing they changed, the big thing they changed, is they are going to allow grandfathering. And I think this is in response to a lot of the outcry from the property managers out there that have, and just owners of vacation rentals in town. There was a lot of several hundred letters came in, and they got several calls individually, I know. And so that was the one change, the one major change from when you saw it. They're going to include the guest houses, as you suggested, to allow those to be used as home shares. Prohibited the short term rentals in apartments and residential zones, but allow them in the mixed use or commercial zones, as suggested by the Planning Commission. To go to, to go with the, not only the description about the separation requirement for each one of them, but to go with the three lot or the 775 feet, whichever is greater on the street, to add that in. They're going to reduce the cap to the suggested 175. That was, I think, both, Planning Commission came up from 150 to meet the the T bid recommendation of 175. And so they they went along with that. They're excluding home share rentals from the cap, both the cap and the density requirements. I talked about the grandfathering thing. Then they, you know, then they, you know, went with the the change for the occupancy maximum. So I think that was it. I think that was all of the items that we did. That's, there's like 10 of them. So.
Some people contacted me asking if we were going to be seeing it again. And I said, no, it's, it's done. They, they're going to be looking at it. And it would really be the the material that comes out this Thursday for the, for the meeting that they would, people should take a look at to, to see what the status of the current proposal is. And then this meeting would potentially be the enacting or the vote for the ordinance.
Yeah, we had the, at the previous city council meeting, that was the first reading. But because, because of the way we brought it forward, there are a number of changes. And so because it was, ended up being 10 changes, we said, let's continue the first reading to this next meeting, and then put it all in track changes so you can see it. And then have everybody say, yes, this is what we want, as opposed to trying to add 10 changes into the text of the of the ordinance at that meeting. That would have been difficult. Could have done it, but it would have taken a while. And it would have been kind of messy. And so the recommendation, you know, that came from us was that, let's bring it back, do it right, and confirm all of the things that that were discussed and agreed upon by the majority of the council. So that's what we're doing. And then we'll have a second reading at the, at the following council meeting.
So Scott, does the grandfathering apply primarily to the density issues? Or does it also apply to portability of the license and that sort of thing?
Yeah, there's no portability. Yeah, there's no, there's no portability in the existing code, which is why I didn't reference it. I mean, you guys all agreed and said that you agreed to that. But that's what's in the code anyway. So we're just going with what it says, can transfer it.
Well, there are people trying to sell properties out there still, saying it has an existing vacation rental license, which you too could have. The realtors are selling properties that way. Okay.
Bad on them. When they come to us and try to transfer it, we tell them no.
Good. Excellent.
Yeah. Because we also, at that meeting, adopted that we continued the moratorium, which doesn't allow us to issue any new vacation rental permits of any type at all. And that is transferring, it is a new vacation rental permit because it gives it to a new person and we can't do that. So that'll be a place to, we get the ordinance put, you know, we had, we're running through it at council, but then it has to go to Coastal to be certified. And then, so that's why the moratorium, we had to extend it for 10 months and 15 days.
Joseph, you had something?
Scott, does the grandfathering mean that with respect to the, the Beach Comer's area, where the density is the highest, that will remain unchanged except for natural attrition?
That's how it'll work. It'll, the grandfathering means natural attrition will be what takes care of the separation between the units and brings them into compliance over time. Certainly, it'll be somewhat slower in that area of town because those are some of the ones that are used the most. They're the most popular, they generate, and we know that because they generate the most income. And so, but they do change, they do turn over. I, you know, I've, I've approved several over there in that neighborhood. So it isn't something that doesn't happen, it does happen. But I would imagine it'll be slower than there than it will in some of the other areas of town.
And I don't mean to call this a loophole, but did they, did anybody address the LLC or the corporation loophole?
We didn't have a, with the city attorney look at it, and there wasn't really a great way to do that. You know, because we don't have any way to know when LLCs change. That's the, that was the problem. We have a trust or something like that. The makeup of the trust is, they have, you know, they're the kind of, what the city attorney said, they never die. They're kind of like zombies. They can just go on. LLCs can forever, too. The makeup, as long as there are people in it, they could just keep going. So there is an issue potentially with that, but they didn't have a great resolution. And maybe if it becomes an issue that we're aware of over time, that we can look into, see, you know, do some more research into it. But at this point, that's, we haven't, we didn't address it in the ordinance.
Scott, there is, you do have officers in an LLC, you do have president, vice president. So I think if, you know, that could be a trigger point. If the, if the president changes or the, you know, president or vice president changes, that could be a trigger point on an ownership change.
Yeah, the issue is, there's no, there's no, there's no mechanism for notification to us for it. That's the problem. And so we wouldn't necessarily know about it, you know, and it's sort of having to do a lot of, you know, we have to research these things every year. I just don't know that it, I don't know that's cost effective or good use of our time. I just don't know how much of an, I don't believe it's going to be that much of an issue. If we do find it to be one, though, we can change the ordinance and it would, you can apply can apply it to everybody. So I, I think it's just something that over time we'll have to monitor and if it, we start seeing more of them operated out of LLCs or, and/or trusts, then maybe we need to come up with something. That we can monitor because we see, we have a list of vacation rentals, they'll be on the website, everybody will be able to see them and you'll be able to see how many of them, you know, are made up of, of those types of entity.
Okay. Scott, I know you've been busy on one or two things. So, did you get any feedback as far as the EV fast charging stations?
Yeah, they're still, they're, I, I talked to Rob Leivik, our city engineer, and they are in conjunction, they have, I think I told you, they have to move them. They are, the staff person who's now left that was working on it identified a location that is actually in one of the parking lots that are down on the waterfront, but the property that the parking lot sits on is actually Vistra's or Dynage's. And so we needed to move them. And so Rob was working on that about a week and a half ago to move that over, get that approved through the grant process so that we could execute. They need to do that because I think the grant expires here in, you know, a few weeks. But they were in the process and talking actively with the grant folks, so it sounds like that's going to happen.
Yeah, I've been in contact with Electrify America, which is another, another fast charging from, and they're basically creating a system because of the diesel gate situation. So, you know, you might want to maybe pass that on, they may be a more willing partner than, than somebody else's as far as getting them up. Do we have any, anything else from the Planning Commission? Okay. So Scott, do you have anything that you'd want to add to this?
The only other thing that I would say would be, you know, as you, you know, start your review of Plan Morro Bay, you know, hoping to do a couple of things, hoping to, you know, you know, get through that review, because you guys have seen the document before. It's going to look and sound largely the same as what you looked at before. You probably want to make sure that the changes the Planning Commission, you know, requested by looking at the table are the ones that we made. Probably want to, I'm sure you're curious about what Coastal, you know, has said and wanted to do, and so definitely look through that stuff. But as questions come up with you, as you were reviewing the document, send those to us because we're happy to answer them now and happy to answer them in the public forum. It just could facilitate the review process and shorten it because we would like to get through this in a, in a couple of meetings with you. Just because the Planning Commission, we have to bring the zoning code to you as well and we have folks that potentially are terming out prior to the end of the year and bringing somebody up to speed on these would not be great. So I'd like to get the zoning code and general plan through the Planning Commission before potentially commissioners change in February. So that's what we're trying to achieve. So if you could keep that in mind, I would appreciate it. It would be tough, as all of you know, really tough to bring someone up cold that's not been involved with this. They would have no historical context, not having gone through any of this, it'd be difficult. So I, I'm hoping to get it through with the, the folks I have in front of me here, so.
May I request a printed version?
Yeah, absolutely. We have some available, we'll reach out to you and let you know when they're available. I know we're getting one for Joe and Susan, was it, were you the one that?
Yeah, I've got mine already.
Oh, you got yours already? Okay.
Yeah, I'd like one, I'd like one too, Scott.
Sure, absolutely. We can do that. We'll let you know when they're, when they're ready and we'll give you a hauler. I, I think we might actually have them printed right now. I know that I saw a few of them sitting on the desk, on Gina's desk, so if not, we'll get what we need printed and get them out to you immediately. Probably reach out to you tomorrow.
Okay. Anybody else want to bring anything else up or? Scott, are you good?
I'm good, I don't have anything else. Thank you all.
Okay, thanks, everybody, and stay safe and let's remember to vote early and.
And often.
As Mark Twain would say, vote often. Let's not do that. So at this point, we'll adjourn to the next regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting on October 20th, 2020 at 6:00 PM via this wonderful ecological marvel we have here. So, thanks a lot, guys.
Good night, guys.
Be safe.